Item 9 is to discuss and approve cell phone reimbursement for a building inspector. And I think this is just Mary, is it not what we did for Jason?
Uh, no. This is... There was a cell phone that we had, but I don't think Jason was using it. And this is something Rick has requested. And we asked him, we said, "We have a cell phone. Would you rather use that?" And he was preferred only to carry one phone.
Right, so we're reimbursing him for his personal phone?
Yes.
And that's what we did for Jason?
I don't think we did that for Jason. I think this is something additional. Am I wrong on that? Which is probably, I mean, things have changed. A lot of stuff is done on the cell phone. I mean, I know we're reimbursing the police officers. How much did we reimburse them?
Forty.
Forty a month? Well, I would think that the building inspector would not use his phone as much as the police officers.
I would like that to happen.
Yeah, yeah.
All of these in the building and building and building at this time of the year.
But, I mean, doing something is probably appropriate. But I wouldn't say forty.
Heard somebody say thirty one. Here is an interview or something. You guys saw the dollar.
It was a week.
Okay, then twenty, thirty.
It's hard to know, you know, depending on what his plan is and how many minutes and, you know, how do you calculate out, you know, my plan? We never even begin to go come close, so it's kind of like, okay.
It doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Depending on that stuff.
So, yeah, I don't know how you would calculate that out because he could end up making money off of it if you, you know, if you have a huge amount of minutes. So, I almost wonder if it should be part of his job, you know, that he's getting paid to do this job. I, I don't know. Just needs, I don't think it's, they should be a big dollar now.
Or if he, I think, per his fees because of the calls he's made and he turns those.
Yeah, it is.
Reimbursed.
Wouldn't it be simpler just to do a small flat fee? I mean, the officer would get forty. If we did twenty, would that be? I don't, I don't think, he can't use it very as much as they do. It's like you said, they have a plan, yeah, you may be using.
I mean, and my plan is only like fifteen dollars a month to have a phone.
An initial phone?
An extra phone. You know, I don't know what his plan is. So, even twenties would pay for his whole line for.
Do you remember how much we were spending on the phone when we had said thirty? We were spending thirty and we wanted to shut that one off. So, we'll save the thirty there. But I'm a bit of that around here.
Is there a need for him to be using the smartphone or Dada and so forth?
Dada, no. I suppose it would be handy for looking up code references or, you can say, or emailing or something. I mean, how long do you think he's going to have? And that's per month, right? Not per acre. I would make a motion that we do approve Senator reimbursement for the building inspector, in this case, currently Rick Eviott, in the amount of twenty dollars per month. I believe that's, is that ten per acre?
He gets paid once a month.
He gets paid once a month, so twenty dollars per month.
I'll say that. Any other discussion or comments? Councilmember Ellen?
Aye.
Of course.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Aye.
Item 10 is to discuss and appoint citizens to a committee to make recommendations to the city council on every agency codes, ordinances, policies, and.
I see the names. Do we need to appoint somebody to head the committee to the ball rolling, to start making the phone calls and setting up times? That was my only thought is we have four really qualified people. I know my dad doesn't want to be in charge, but, you know, if somebody else wants to say.
I can think of somebody.
I think Shelley should. Shelley.
Wrong committee.
Oh, wrong committee. Oh, I did that. I'm on the wrong one, sorry.
You know, I had somebody on that list, had too many for me once they did a really good job. Why not do that with me?
And assuming we got guesses from all three of you.
So, we're talking four names, correct?
Yes.
We're talking Gary Alway, Nita Miller, and Terry Francis. So, those are the four that have been sent in and I think everybody's been talked to.
I suspect we can formally ask one person to head things up. Don't you think, Terry? Can we ask somebody?
I'm at your disposal.
And I have, I have another comment, too. You know, on these committees, I think probably somebody from the city should know who's supposed to be.
City council?
Either the city council or the city, probably with the city administration.
I don't want to be real for that.
There'll be questions from time to time, right? I'm sorry. Somebody from the local representative.
I'd be willing to help on that one. I'd be one beloved.
Because they're making a recommendation to come back to the council, right? So, that's all that it does is our identification. So, we have Gary Alway, Nita, Lee. Was something, Nita, you knew that you were potentially on this committee?
No, not on this committee. I was down, I'm on the.
Well, you're on one.
You're on both.
Yes.
Not on both.
Oh, you're on both. I'm on Trevor.
What's the other major fleet, Gary?
Yeah, there's, there's none of them.
Who are you talking about?
Nikki, did you do that?
I think your name was put out at the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, for the, for the.
Somebody talked to John about this? I talked to John about this. I didn't talk to John about this.
I didn't say, I didn't, his name wasn't brought up last time.
He got a new role.
Yeah, I think that was supposed to be.
It's up to you.
I agree.
Where did John, how did John Espinular's name end up on this committee? Did somebody talk to him?
It was given to the call to the clerk. So, I did call him now if he'd be arrested.
Oh, you did call him, okay. Because I spoke to him about the Allegiant Health.
Can you do it? Is that okay, Nita?
What?
To be on this?
Right now, we're talking about the committee for updating codes, ordinances, policies.
Going to the policy manual. We thought you, since you've dealt with ordinances for a long time, you would have a clue as to what needs to be revised.
Yeah. I mean, I know, I probably know that, yeah. Do I want to? Probably not.
Let me just point out one other thing, too, right? Swift Code does this as well. So, they can use additional resources. Swift Code is. So, it's not like they're going to go out and reinvent the wheel. I mean, we have them currently, they need updated, reclassification, you know.
And if I know Terry at all, this is kind of right in his wheelhouse and he'll probably do a lot of legwork to me.
Right. And his resources, again, I talked to Swift Code tonight before the meeting. And they have that. And it's a service they provide and they do it all the time for cities. So, they got the breadth of what others do and how they do it, which is very resourceful.
Tell me if you know them or not.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, we have the four people, right? Do you want a specific chair for this?
You probably should.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion. Who do you want? Just who they ask.
That's fine.
Have to be excited, right?
All right. I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Gary Alway, Nita Fleet, John Espinular, and Terry Francis to a citizens committee to update the city codes and ask Terry Francis to serve as the chair of that committee.
And with Bill Dewitt.
And with Bill Dewitt representing the council.
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions from the council or the representatives? If you don't want to.
I don't.
If you don't want to, we're not here.
You're voting on the committee and are the council representatives, so I don't think so.
Yeah, you can still meet if I want to.
This is just informal, yeah.
Oh, every so often, with four or five people, it'll be pretty, I mean, if somebody can't make it, you can sort of, yeah.
Very informal.
It'll be informal, but it'll be, it's okay.
Nothing more than twenty or thirty hours.
I'm sure you'll, you're helping to post your meetings, and I'm sure you'll have people show up to. I'm sure you'll get input whether you like it or not. Anybody make a second?
The committee has to post the agenda?
Yes.
They do now. Remember that Kerry.
Oh, yeah. I have Nick one. He's been there.
I have a motion and a second. So, councilman Ellen?
Aye.
Coors?
Aye.
Agenda item 10 is to discuss and appoint citizens in the community center building improvement committee to make recommendations to the city council on improvements to the community center. I believe we have another list of people. Regine Darling, Nita Fleet, Kerry Waters, Shelley Fauch, Jerry Kaiser, Mary Totten, and Rick Eviott.
Did anybody talk to Rick Eviott? That was one that we were going to get a hold of and.
Not exactly. I'm sure he'll be pleased to say that.
Shelley said she'd chair it.
Okay. I think Warren would be excellent council representative, honestly.
I agree.
Daniel?
Oh, we talked about having one of the city administrators do it because they are here and they know the building.
Well, that's true. We did talk.
Yeah.
Look how she gets out.
I know. She gets the next one.
Welcome to the Allegiant.
Welcome to the Allegiant Health Committee.
Which one of you would want to?
Is that a conflict with Jerry and Mary?
Yeah, I mean, we can probably, they're not, they don't have a conflict with being in the same meeting, so.
No, I think it's both.
Yeah. And if one of them can't make it that way, one of them can.
So, one of them.
That's fair.
So, there you go.
I make a motion that the community center building improvement committee will compose Regine Darling, Nita Fleet, Kerry Waters, Shelley Fauch as chair, Jerry Kaiser, Mary Totten, and Rick Eviott, and either the clerk administrator or the assistant will attend.
Shelley, did you say Shelley chair?
Yep.
Okay, I missed that. I'll second that.
Any further conversation? Nita?
I'm fine. I'm fine.
Councilmember Ellen?
Aye.
Coors?
Dewitt? Aye.
Agenda item 12 is to discuss and approve the library board's recommendation to appoint John Espinular to fill their vacant board position.
Did anybody hear from the library board to make that recommendation or just?
They made the recommendation.
I will make a motion that we approve John Espinular to fill the vacant library board position.
I'll second it.
John does know about this and all of this stuff.
Yes.
He's giving me two couple of boards.
Yes. He did.
Yeah, some people don't know.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Ellen?
Aye.
Coors?
Dewitt? Congratulate John as well.
Sorry, did you second?
Item 13. Ray, pool board president.
We want to table this one.
Table it for a year.
You keep trying. What, did you have that deny stamp or something? Is that him?
You're here to discuss the pool board 2013 year-end report.
I have a, I think everybody's got their report, right? But the one thing I need to add to that report is that we did have a meeting, a meeting last week. This week? This week?
This is Monday.
Oh, yeah. Didn't last the day.
Do you guys need coffee? Follow us.
Good. Okay. Okay. I don't know.
Do you want to coffee?
No, unless you have a question. There's a, we had our own board meeting, and we had recommendations on there. Tammy Hinkle, your board voted on her with president and Mary Michael. She's on Michael's.
Yes, right. No up's on that mic.
Mary Michael. And as vice president, and Jamie Lapte, she used to, is the secretary.
Is she ever here?
So, and then Joe Esser, I had asked Joe to hear your name, too. I think it's a wonderful time for him to want to be on the pool board. He swims all the time up there with his two boys. He's there all the time, so it's a great, great thing to consider if you want to consider him. The other thing that we had was, and I'd like to, you know, I had to put some input on painting the pool. We did a pretty surprising bid with the painting of the pool. There was one at sixteen thousand to twenty-one thousand is what we looked at. And so, we, and those are, of course, can be another budget, you know, not this year, but it'd have to be, if you did it this year, it'd have to be at the end of the season, of course. But I'd be glad to talk to you guys about that sometime. And like I said, it's not a, I think Scott County maybe a couple of courses for cement repair. But it wasn't to worry about that, I think.
Was that painting the pool, this question? And I mean, I know the pool board used to do the old work, but that's probably not.
Not.
Not a good idea.
Not a good idea.
I know it's probably special paint, is it? Is there any special qualifications that we need to worry about or?
I just talked to the cell rep in Omaha Kim today and mentioned, asked him if he knew of some companies that when I got time to bid, he said, "Yeah, there's a couple in Omaha that he could reference to to bid." He said we just need to look back in the original specs and see what kind of paint they used. Have you used the same thing?
Okay.
I have all that.
You have all that?
Yeah.
I would have called the company who did it before.
Okay.
Vicki and I were talking about that, so she doesn't need any. It's tremendously expensive, but they say it's a five-year paint job, five paintings, and run it in. And Scott just a few in last year.
I don't know whether, you know, you have to have those companies look and see if they need to be sandblasted and all that or what the recommendation would be or I imagine they're going to have to do something to that before the repainters or else they'll probably peel off. I don't know anything about it, but so.
It's not something just to look at. I mean, like I said, it's not tomorrow thing. We're going to look at it. But, and then, of course, we need a new diving board, but that's, we have a sixteen-foot diving board and we've got some prices. It's all around two thousand dollars. And that's already the budget we had. So, that's nothing, nothing to worry about.
She diving boards last year or this?
No, that's what they say. Five or six years. They get a lot of use. This one here has the roughness to go off of it. They got lots of new bolts and stuff, and it's, but that's already, I mean, we did that. And we have, we have other places we pass in line. We're lucky to have lots and lots more than last year. Been talking to binards, actually. That's just about the only thing I really would do, guys. Keep in the back of your mind right now is the painting of the pool. You get the painting, that's, and the budget sometime. And maybe it could be two different budgets.
In the one beginning.
That way it wouldn't be such a big bite in stuff.
So, does the council have any, I know Ray passed out the activity for the year, the year-end report at the last meeting. Do you have any questions about that report? Understanding, I don't know if any of you have it in private, but.
Yeah, we don't, Vicki found some numbers for me before you discussed this stuff, too, but I don't like to argue about it. Do you approve her? This is a pretty good year.
I'd just like to thank you for your years of service. You've done a good job and we appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to, I wanted to own the pool, you know, and so that was one of my tests.
And you said Joe wants to be on the pool?
Yes, can you believe that? It's true, right? I'm considered excited.
Well, again, thank you for your service. And we talked about it last, last meeting. Again, thank you for your service. Our apologies done for the community and the kids and for everything. Now, I don't know if we officially, and maybe we did, officially accept his resignation. I do have that as item D on 13 to discuss and approve Regine Darling's pool board resignation.
So, we can deny that?
We don't have a word on it. So, Ray's pool board resignation.
I make a motion to approve Regine Darling's pool board resignation.
I'll say that. Councilmember Ellen? Coors?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Salute.
Thank you.
So, 13C is to discuss and approve at their recommendation for pool board appointment of officers for 2014. Who could put on here? That would be Tammy Hinkle, president, Mary Michael, vice president, and Jamie Lapte, treasurer. Is that correct, pool board?
It is.
Are you willing to willingly extend?
Yeah, she's, yeah. Had to pull my arm along.
The secretary.
No, but these two, Reggie and me, we're coming.
We usually, we have to. I mean, I know.
Can they just themselves decide or?
I mean, I guess we can. I just didn't know if that was.
At least this year.
I make a motion to approve Tammy Hinkle, president, Mary Michael, vice president, and Jamie Lapte, treasurer of the pool board.
I'll say that. Any other discussion to pass? Councilmember Ellen? Coors?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Congrats.
And Tammy's already better than her husband, delegating authority. You see, she got rated.
She's good.
Agenda item 13D is to discuss and approve at the recommendation of the pool board, appointment of Joe Esser to fill their vacant board position.
I say to approve before he backs out. I'll make a motion to approve Joe Esser to fill the vacant pool board position.
I'll submit.
Any sort of questions? Councilmember Ellen?
Aye.
Coors?
Dewitt? Congrats, Mr. Esser.
Thank you.
Or can those just pick on you and look at it?
Thanks to all of them for your service, what you will do. No problem. Agenda item 14, and I, and I don't know, is commissioner, are you actually, was it the commissioner versus the?
Oh.
Is that what you're calling it?
I think I am commissioner.
You were.
I keep forgetting about it. Were. Mary wants to make sure it's were.
You were.
The commish.
I, the commish.
My name is pool board president, and I have Kurt as park board president. So, maybe president is exactly the right word to sound better. So, agenda item 14 is Kurt Hinkle, park board president. Discussing the legal park board plans for 2014 is the first agenda item.
We had a meeting on January eighth. We discussed a couple of things that we need to get fixed up in the park. There's a light that is broken that we're going to be getting repaired or replaced. We're going to put gutters on the new shelter and tractor tucks. We have a couple of tractor tucks that need replaced. As far as budget stuff, we were also talking about the Kiwanis on some parking equipment or no fractals that we want to do with the memory box. Those are our big things that we want to do, get done for the year. We also discussed and voted on the addition, very normally, to fill our vacant position on the board as well as we voted to add two alternate spots. Basically, just a couple of people that would be able to come in, do our meetings, help with projects. And then, if somebody on our board stepped down, they'd be able to step in and they would be comfortable and.
So, the park board plans for 2014, that goes over in budget from budget to budget since the budget is ending in the middle of the summer? That's a question.
More of this to be.
Are there, are we going to be applying for grants or anything as far as other park grants out there? Mickey, you may be.
Can we start getting more into the details of the park project and how we can, there's lots of grants out there, but we, first of all, need to get a plan and an initial estimated cost.
Can I just make a recommendation for something for you guys to discuss? Is that basketball court now at the downtown park really could stand to be redone?
We discussed all of that. Did we decide that we had friends for that?
There is a new, one new bowl and basket that's been down our shed for.
I think the concrete is getting busted.
It'd just be nice to redo that if we ever can.
That's a nice line to say.
I don't know. There's probably, if you wanted to, you know, comparing it as one thing, if you wanted to redo it, that's where you bring stuff.
Just a suggestion. Anyway.
Do you have the people revise for the alternate spots already?
Gordy Flea's name was brought up for the one position, and you were under the impression that the second one has to be a female.
I have someone in mind that I haven't asked for yet.
Do you want to just hold off on the alternates until we have?
I wouldn't, would that be better, to hold off until we have a female?
Probably the alternates.
From the alternates, go ahead and approve the vacant position.
Yeah. Then once we have the two names, have them come back and just approve the names.
Just approve. I don't care. I mean, if you approve Gordy tonight, if you want, it'll just leave you with a number again, but it doesn't matter.
Don't, don't you have to change your name if you have to? Or are they?
It's not a code thing.
Is it a code thing?
It said, it said.
Right.
Okay.
Numbers. No, these are going to be alternates, not actual.
Didn't they change it to seven last?
Yeah, it's already seven, but.
When you change it to seven. So, we have one here in actual, approve Gary. Now, we've had actual, you see, we've had alternates in the past.
Maybe, maybe.
That's how we used to do it when it was just five.
If they're alternates, is that something?
Is it something that, I mean, that, I mean, they, could be a verbal thing with you guys that there's?
Where do you go?
Yeah.
They're not official park boards. They're volunteers that assist them and what's.
That's kind of why we brought up the alternate thing, so you can always change the code. I didn't think about it being official.
So, if it's kind of just.
Is it something we need to add?
So, I'm learning.
Have your two.
If they're not officially on the park board, then if the situation arises, you'd be able to bring another name.
And if you get a vacancy, bring the name you want to replace it, and we'll approve that.
Any other questions for Kurt? Thank you. Thank you. Gary?
Don't you have to appoint how long?
We do. We got everybody else, but you know we have to appoint how long. We have to appoint how long to determine.
How long is my term to be? That's ridiculous.
Twenty years. Forever.
The idea is to keep alternating.
Right.
Do you guys know where you're supposed to be, I mean, as far as numbers?
Do they're at three, six? There's one for three and six. Yeah. Three and six. We'll get our notes, there's one for three and six. His next 14 visas, discuss and approve park board recommendation, very normally, to fill the vacant positions. We'll get what to turn this to.
My question was more geared toward the money side of it. Please let us know. Before we kind of worked it, so if we didn't use our money from the previous year, we get to use it in the next one. Trying to maximize that dollar. So if you guys could let us know what we had before we.
You know what's in this, but. I mean, we can find out.
We had rough numbers, but. So see, we have rough numbers.
Yeah, we had some numbers there, but we weren't. She gave us like a sheet and we weren't exactly sure exactly where we were. Our money was. From.
We'll figure it out and let you know what the current budget is. And then do you have something you've already submitted for a mixture?
Because we usually go off the year before, but we never have.
So we'll get you this year and then you can figure out from this year what you want to do next year.
That would be. Okay, I got one more. I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a community, community budget. Do you need to see a push? So we can. About that also.
Community education budget or community education grant?
Money budget.
There's a line I report.
Who usually spends that?
We did it one time. I know that.
By what, leaving town? You go on vacation and Logan's doing a buy?
Yeah, for the Alvin, that's where they put it in on Alvin.
Your current budget is fifteen thousand.
Right, fireworks come out of that. There's lots of stuff that you need to spend.
Remember the. Three thousand, I think it's for a trip. That's pretty much.
We'll get more. That's what the total is, fifteen. Vicki, do you want to buy CDs with that till you can carry over to the new year?
Yeah, we make money.
Check the rate of CD. Going forward, if you would do a challenge and you're able to stay on with us on any of the matters versus the challenge that we have today. If that's, if that's how we choose. You asked the other question, so obviously, the grant force in our building, it's very convenient for handy to bump into Chris. The other side of it is, though, two hundred and ten dollars is a lot of money compared to a hundred and twenty-five. I don't know necessarily, as I think about the types of things we need and potential alternative for the one forward. You know, the time, urgency, the sensitivity hopefully isn't there. I would probably err on the side, at least until somebody proves us wrong, on reducing the expense to the city versus immediate access. There's a big difference. One twenty-five to two hundred and ten to double. There's a big difference. Yes. And obviously, Rachel's very familiar with Iowa.
Community in Iowa.
And our community, our laws, our ordinances. I guess the biggest question I would have then is what, how do we proceed with Rothenberg? Do we leave him on that? On the, with their case, or should we? You guys have been around longer. You tell us your confidence level of. You know, it's not.
Though I'm not sure they're necessarily Aaron's fault or they're with Aaron's. Does that, I mean, I don't know how much I can elaborate on. You know what I mean? I have concerns moving forward with that. I personally prefer a clean break and just to. Clean the lines of communication up and, and break the ship and get things back in order. But I understand your concerns and I think it's about.
You didn't by chance have that conversation with Rick, did you? With Rick Frank? I did not. Okay, at this point. Rick said, whatever you want to do, I'm gonna use me for a month. Things aren't feeling right, that's fine, go in a different direction or whatever, so. All right, go ahead.
I'm just thinking, you know, Aaron does know the situation inside and out, you know? He has a plan of what he sees. But I still have had a few questions when I left going. So. I'm kind of fifty-fifty trying.
Yeah, it's a tough one. I would suggest.
Can we move forward with Rick and use, and use Aaron as a consultant only as needed? I mean. It is Rick, right? You say Rick?
Right, his real name is. Certainly, we give it, we give the names there. Well, if we would, if we would make the move. Rothenberg even mentioned it again, I'd have to sit down. And do a file transfer and information transfer with our new attorney. He brought that up, so. Now they don't get the history, they don't get the.
Right.
Personal experience, so.
There's pros and cons of it.
Might be, you see fresh eyes.
Right.
You don't know all the.
Maybe in advance, you won't be tainted.
I personally would, would say moving forward anyway, I'd like to have a change.
And if for some reason Rick's like, okay, this is way too much. We always would have the option, I suppose, to go back and say. Karen, what do you have?
If I hear what you guys are saying, maybe it's, maybe we just appoint. Or hire Rick Frank. And kind of leave that process to him. Let's talk to him about what he feels like he's going to know more than us on what's probably the.
Well, I think.
Best way would move forward.
As a council, couldn't we move forward in that direction and give Mike the authorization to consult with Aaron or reuse Aaron as needed? I mean, I, on, on those matters, I mean.
I'll be honest, we have a need now. In large parts.
That's true. Do we know if we're behind? Do we know if a extension is?
You don't know? Yeah. All right, and this is just my personal opinion. I support Rick Frank going forward. I think it's late in the game. I think we have to go with. We brought to the dance at this point. Unless something, other circumstances change.
I'm okay with that, as long as you clarify the lines of communication and we clarify that. Back to Aaron. As to how that works and who's gonna.
And he also said he serves as the plainer of the council. So anytime we're not happy, we're not signing anything with him. We're not happy with his performance or anything of that nature. Let me ask you this, is it ethical to use Frank as a sounding board if we're questioning something? Now that gets sticky. For work with two attorneys. Then what do you do? Yeah, I know. That's. Ethical's the right word. Practical comes to mind. Yeah. That's kind of bringing a third attorney into it. I just don't think that's very practical, personally. You have an attorney representing you on a matter and you have somebody always looking over the shoulder. Right. Second guessing and quarterbacking. And Rothenberg did bring up some.
I was really surprised. I, I'll be honest, I thought he did a great job. My issues. He was put in as, as hard a position as anybody was and. But it's just not a position we want to continue to be in. I think it. To not necessarily be followed as home, it's just not an ideal working situation. In my opinion.
I kind of agree with Mike. I think we should. Look forward, future. With this Rick Frank.
I definitely agree with that.
And then. For the time being, just leave Rothenberg in charge of the one through case.
But that doesn't affect this resolution. Resolution is if we're changing the name of a.
Rick Frank as the city attorney going forward.
Okay.
And we also, and we also have Aaron Rothenberg. Working with. The insurance providing attorney very largely in the winter lawsuit against the city.
But is that done as part of this resolution?
Yeah, I don't know. There's probably a separate thing in my mind because this is kind of the resolution going forward. Who's the city attorney going forward, so it'd be a separate resolution.
So if we're gonna do that, we need to do that as quickly as possible. But should we discuss the possibility of meeting special meetings?
And we're gonna probably need one for the budget anyway.
Well. That being said. I think that I would make a motion to approve. Resolution number fourteen, that zero one. Resolution pertaining to the policies and procedures set by the city local, the Logan City Council. With one. Change on item number three, changing the appointment of the city attorney to Rick Frank.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna second guess myself here for a second. The, the city attorney currently is our. And so we're looking at appointing a new city attorney going forward. There's existing business that we want the current city attorney to, to finish out. I wonder if we can.
Well, we could say, I'd remember three, appointing Rick Frank as the city attorney with Aaron Rothenberg to continue on.
The winter lawsuit against the city.
Okay. Talk about the conflict.
Who do you think?
I guess it makes sense.
Can we do that in this resolution?
Otherwise, we're gonna have to have another meeting.
Which we may have to do any time.
Well, we may not, I mean, we will have to.
In a day or so.
You could probably word it in that paragraph.
Because it's, it's existing city attorney. We're replacing going forward. Replacing going forward on all new business, existing old business, which would be the one for lawsuit against the city.
Their view of that?
Continue on until that. Can I just throw something out that you don't mind? You're saying Aaron Rothenberg is the current city attorney?
Right now.
Yeah. Was, was he ever?
He was never reappointed.
He was never reappointed on August the third of last year.
Right.
Because that's when his term expired, was August third of last year, and he was never reappointed by any documentation of any preceding council. So he really isn't the city attorney at this point that I know.